Good morning. I call to order the July 7, 2020, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I ask you please stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a situation here this morning that, well, first of all, let me go on, we're into the citizens' input. I intended to allow citizens' remarks on anything they wanted this morning that's not on the agenda. The COVID-19 update is on the agenda, but there is no RFA attached with it, so that would normally mean that we would not take public comment in that. I think this is an unusual situation, that we will take public comment, and I'm going to do that underneath that area when we get to it, as opposed to the citizens' input area of this thing. So, the citizens will be allowed to speak if they so desire. I guess is what I'm trying to get with them. I'm wrestling with it myself on how to do this. So, at this point, we will move to the citizens' input, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Norman Manlos Salina. It's kind of iffy what you're saying, Mr. Vidrickson. But if you revisit, if you revote a decision, does it change the vote process? If you revisit an issue that you made the decision before, previously, it changes the dynamic of how the vote is done. And until you eliminate the cause, you won't solve the problem. A vaccine is a temporary fix. I believe the spokesperson from the person representing the company that is addressing this jail issue, he says the first step is to identify the cause. He says then when you identify the cause, you eliminate what's causing it. Well, you haven't identified what the cause is yet.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for regular business. The consent agenda today consists of tax rolled adjustments, accounts payable and payroll, and approval of the public forum as presented. Are there any additions, withdrawals, corrections anyone wants to make? Therefore, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved, approved as read, anyway. We'll move into the open part of it now with the presentations, item number one.
AAA Silver Award presentation to Celine County Sheriff, Bob Hamilton, KDOT Law Enforcement Liaison, Bureau of Transportation, Safety and Technology.
Good morning, Mr. Hamilton.
Good morning. I thought the sheriff was going to be here this morning, but he probably had something come up.
Can't imagine what.
As you said, my name is Bob Hamilton, and if you've watched any of the political stuff on TV, I'm not the guy that's running for US Senate, so let's get that done right now.
You're not a plumber?
No. Okay. I'm a retired law enforcement officer of 33 years. Out of my 33 years, I spent 28 years of that in traffic safety, so I know what the men and women of law enforcement go through on a daily basis out here. We work with AAA Insurance of Kansas, and we look at agencies across the state that we feel have went beyond what they really need to go through to help the citizens of their cities and counties. And your sheriff's office this year is only one of 13 sheriff's offices across the state of Kansas that's receiving an award. Some of the things that they have done to receive this is having a department-wide policy requiring the use of seat belts, participating in the highly successful teen program that's called Safe Seat Belts for Everyone, which really raised our seat belt usage among our younger drivers, dedicated enforcement campaigns targeting seat belts and DUIs, and conducting safety checks and proper installations of child seats. The sheriff's office is receiving a silver award this year. This is the first year that they have received this award. So, at this time, I'd like to thank you county commissioners, because without your support, the sheriff's office couldn't operate out here the way they do. So, at this time, it's my pleasure, I guess, to present to the deputy the silver award this year through AAA.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. We're very proud of the sheriff's department and the work that goes on over there and the daily challenges that are before you, and thank you for serving.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from commissioners? If not, we'll move to item number two.
Road and Bridge Update. Darrell Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
This is our Road and Bridge update for the last couple of months and our activities from May and June. The first thing, one of the things we did was we hosted a Build a Better Mousetrap presentation. We received this award from LTAP, which is a Licensed Technical Assistance Program through KU. What we did was a few years ago, we had an idea to build a device to clean out low-box culverts. The only way we had to clean those out was manually with a shovel or hire a very expensive vacuum truck. So, as we start talking about this and the ideas, it really was a co-related effort between everybody, we decided to employ Leroy Douglas of Douglas Manufacturing in Kip to build this. Ideas just kept piling on, and so this is part of the process. And then Leroy came up, well, I can put a dump bucket on the end of it, and part of that manufacturing. And one of the goals was to have this so it was transferable with one load. A crew could take this, the skid steer, and everything that they needed to clean out the bucket on one trailer. And so, we made a deal that made it stackable, and these fit together kind of like a crane. If you look at this right here, these go together in sections, so you just snap them together and then pin them here at the bottom, and you put one on, you clean out what you can, go to the other side, and then you put another one on, and so on and so forth. And this is 16 feet long, so it'll clean out a fairly long concrete box covert. This is our generator at our shop building. It is old and reached its useful life. One of the things that we considered when building our shop addition was the continuity of government, so we installed electronics in the floor that if something were happening here and people needed a place to work, they could come downtown and use our conference room. Well, this generator was barely big enough to run the old shop building. We would have to shut things off, and while we were doing some work at an entrance, a gentleman had this for sale, and we purchased this for $10,000. It has about 400 hours on it, and it was the generator from the Linsberg Hospital. So, it is completely big enough to run our facilities. We haven't taken possession of it or have it installed yet. We did some trash pickups, and then we dirt patched the senior center parking lot before they opened to do a little bit of that, and we replaced 11 crossroad culverts and we edge wedge 26 lane miles. And when I'm talking about the edge wedge, I'm talking about just this little shoulder piece right here. I hesitate to call it shoulder, because it's not really a shoulder. It's just to give a driver an opportunity to correct if he does go off the road, rather than overcorrect and end up in the other ditch. This is Lightville Road going north of Farley Road. There was some construction on Waterwell Road. We gravelled a half a mile of this in order to give people a way to an alternative route. And then we did some guard rail on Old 40. We did some erosion repairs. State Street, this was after the floods from last year. This is a box that's at Lightville and State Street, and it had taken all of this rip rap and put it down in the Mulberry Creek. We added some, and then we went down and retrieved some of that, and then we just put a little bit of concrete over the top of it to lock it together. This is Pleasant Hill Road from, going west from Hall Stud Road. We pulled the ditches and fixed some drainage structures and then re-gravelled this mile and moved the ditches over. This back slope here used to come all the way to the road, so we moved this ditch over and crowned the road so the water can get to the ditch. This is Cloud Street. This is a half a mile going east of Gibson Valley Road, and a couple of culverts in there that were not functioning anymore. We replaced those and then built the road up about six or seven inches through there. That was some of the flood damage that had occurred last year. That's just a shot of that. And this is Magnolia Road going east from the River Bridge or east of Kip Road, and this is where we got the dirt to rebuild Cloud. They're only about a mile apart, so we went in there and cleaned these ditches and re-profiled this road also, and it also had some flood damage that needed repair. We repaired or replaced 456 signs. We hold 12,000 ton of rock, 2,350 ton of AB3, and 4,480 ton of sand. Our department currently has about 50 culverts that need replaced, some of them failing and some of them in different degrees of needing replaced. Our next project is Sundowner West. We plan on rebuilding the roads in Sundowner West. This is typical of roads that haven't been rebuilt in a while. There's just simply no place for the water to go. You can see the road has eroded. The lawns have become higher than the road, so there's really only one place for the water to go. We'll go in and trim this down and then elevate the roadway so the water can get to the ditches. As you can see right here, it's just really high, no ditch to speak of, but as this water falls, it just comes down here and makes cuts in the road instead of getting to these culverts over here. In another certain area, you can see when these roads were built, that the road used to be higher simply because the driveway is higher. When this was built, this road was probably straight across there. So, over time, and in all the books that we've read and all the knowledge is about a quarter inch a year is what a gravel road will lose if you do nothing to it. And so, here's just some areas, again, that show this high shoulder, high driveways, and then this cutting that occurs. And we currently have 3,365 ton of rock, 4,480 ton of sand, and about 1,200 ton of AB3 to haul. We are making headways there. You know, a few months ago, that was about 9,000 or 10,000 ton of rock, and so we're making some progress. But it's weather dependent. You know, the weather's been good to us. Most gravel roads are only as good as what the weather will allow, and we're making some headway.
All right. Questions or comments from commissioners for Mr. Fischel? Hearing none, thank you for your update, Darren, and keep up the good work, and to coin a phrase from you, stay safe, work safe.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three.
COVID-19 Update. Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't have any slides today. I just pulled all the numbers right before this meeting so I could try and give you the updated stats, starting at a national level, just to give you a picture of where we are there, leading down to the county. So, in the US, currently, as of right before your meeting this morning, there were 2.9 million cases since the beginning of this and 130,000 deaths. Kansas has almost 17,000 cases since first case report and 280 deaths. And here in Celine County, we currently now are up to 173 cases to date, with 101 active, 70 recovered, and still two deaths. And if you remember kind of where we were on Thursday as far as case count, that's about 30 new cases over the weekend, from 5:00 PM Friday until 5:00 PM yesterday. Over the last seven days, there have been two hospitalizations, and as reported from the hospital, their resources are still in good shape to deal with any COVID-inpatient. We have added three additional contact investigators to our current group of contact investigators over in the clinic. One of those has been from a repurposed staff member, and two other ones are from new intermittent And then, just coming up, we'll continue, the press releases continue trying to educate residents, and then reviewing data and reviewing that mask ordinance when it's available. Other than that, questions?
There will be some. What I'd like to do at this time is just ask you to step back, and we're going to take some public comment here, and then once we close the public portion of it, we'll come back and do a staff of questions and comments. So, if anyone would like to speak.
I'm Lynne Meyer from Salina, and I attended the, would you believe, six-hour city meeting last night. The item discussing the mask issue was the last thing on the agenda, so of course I was going to stay. They did pass unanimously to wear masks and an ordinance, and I can't give you the particulars of that ordinance, but that is in development as I understand it. So, I'm here to say, please reconsider before the two or three weeks that I understand you said when you met last time, please reconsider now the need for masks. Ironically, I, on the way here today, national news, they were pointing out the increase, et cetera, et cetera, and how that's gotten worse since things have opened up. And they were saying, it's better to be wearing masks than to have to go back to shutdown for communities in terms of businesses, et cetera. So, for me, this is just a common sense issue, and not just common sense. It's compassion and caring for our fellow citizens. So, I strongly encourage you to take a look at it now and make a decision to support the wearing mask in the community when we're out and about. Again, having worked in public health for a lot of years, I've seen what contagions can do. So, I'm asking you to go beyond, if this is an issue for interview, to go beyond politics, to go beyond personal interest, and step up, use some common sense, have a compassionate, caring attitude about our community, and pass now the issue with, yes, we do need to be wearing masks. It's going to protect us all, and those of us who are, people who are immune compromised deserve that kind of respect. And as we know, kids are getting it more and more, not just we elders. So, my passion is to wear masks, and I'm hoping you will seriously take a look at it this time before the two or three weeks is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak?
Norman Manlos Salina, you better consult your counselor first, because he's going to tell you, don't do it. It's a legal issue.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before I bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, and I'm going to start this off by saying that, and Jason, you do have a microphone now, or are you going to sit there? Okay. Jason's number that he gave was since Friday. The number that I've got is 46 cases since our vote. Now, some of those were probably in the process and already been identified before our Thursday vote, but had not been in the press release. So, just since our last Thursday meeting, there's been 46 new cases identified in Celine County, and that is really tough. As everyone knows, or I'm sure you know by now, that the city has adopted their own ordinance to take care of this, and to me, that further complicates our process, because if we go back now and say we want to adopt, go with the governor's mandate, then that kind of countermands what the city's trying to do. In my opinion, we need to piggyback with the city and adopt their ordinance. I mean, I listened to it last night, and from what I know, I just think we need to be in step with the city on this thing. I think we need to rethink our decision. I implore my fellow commissioners to possibly take some action. I don't know if that's possible today without an RFA or whatever we need to do. I don't know what the ramifications are there, but we certainly need to rethink our position. I think that also that we sent a bad message to the employees of the Health Department and board members when they made a recommendation to us, and we didn't follow that, particularly the board members who voted in unison to recommend to us that. I mean, that was one of the reasons I became a county commissioner, because I served on a board in Celine County, and the commission sent us an issue to vote on. We gave them our thoughts, and then they turned around and overturned that. So, people are going to say, why do I need to serve on a board? The commission's going to do what they want to do in the first place. I don't want to go against what the Health Department says. That's my personal opinion. I will say on the masks, and I hear everybody's, you know, the ones that complain about having to wear masks or forced to wear masks, I understand that this mask does not keep me from getting COVID from someone else, basically, but it does really take down the chances that I'm going to give it to someone else. And that's what needs to be, the message that needs to get out there, is that you can be asymptomatic and not even know you've got it, so that people say, I feel fine, I shouldn't have to wear a mask. Well, you may have the symptoms and be able to, if I'm, I hope I'm not speaking out of line there, but that's how I understand it. So, again, I just want to urge my fellow commissioners to consider rethinking our decision on how we voted and what can we do to help. And that having been said, I will ask my fellow commissioners to say something or not.
Well, no matter what we do, it's going to be the law of the city, so consistency means something. Excuse me, I'm going to take my mask off as we're speaking about masks. It's hard for me to talk or people to hear. But consistency, you know, makes sense. You know, there's going to be some people in the rural areas of the county, and there's going to be some people unclear of delineation of when masks are needed and when masks aren't needed. So, I do understand that. And Mr. Chair, you were there, or you watched it, I guess, last night.
I was, yeah, I watched the entire, I went home after a couple of hours, and we hadn't been to that point yet, so I went home, but I did watch the entire debate and considerations and what they passed.
And so, I have not seen it and would like to at some point, because if you really recall, two of the reasons why, or one of the reasons why we didn't pass it last week was the lack of enforcement. Was there any mention of fines or who, does somebody call the police? Does somebody call whatever? How is it enforced? Because that was my, my biggest thing was, and I'll always put a face on it, I have a 19-year-old server, she goes up and asks something, and they say no, and then what's the next step? And my understanding is the city maybe came up with a better answer than the governor's one. Do you recall anything?
I can't exactly recall the details, but they were going to, I think the police would be involved. be involved in enforcement. They're not going to go looking for it. Some of the situation is that they say, you still don't have to wear a mask if you're outside and you're social distancing. Jason, you've probably been, Phil, both have watched this.
Well, that was part of the governor's thing, so I get that.
That was part of the governor's thing.
I'm talking about inside.
But what is different, I think, is if I recall, masks will be required indoors, period. I mean, there's a little bit of a variation to that, but I don't want to speak too much without having seen the final draft from the city, but go ahead.
Well, sorry, turn my mic on. Yes, we have not seen anything in writing. I had a communication with the city manager first thing this morning, and he said they would try and get something over to us. My understanding from his verbal description is that it's a city ordinance, so the enforcement is it's a violation of a municipal code, so that makes it subject to fines, et cetera. And they were, it sounded like they were a bit unclear the extent to which the police department would or would not be involved. And he said that they basically paralleled the governor's order with a couple of exceptions, and one of those exceptions was, in the governor's order, it said, if you're indoors in a place where the public frequents, you would be required to wear a mask whether there was public there or not. And the city changed that to say you would only be required to wear a mask if there was actually public present. But again, that's all verbal, have not seen anything in writing, so when we get that, I'll certainly forward it on to the commission and as well as our staff. I've had numerous inquiries this morning from our staff about what those rules are, so.
My next question would be, and again, if we revisited this, I'd be interested more as an end date. Did the city talk about an end date?
A little bit they did, but they didn't be, they weren't specific. They were hopeful, what they did say is that they thought that if we saw a relaxation in this of even a couple of weeks, they would come back. I mean, just like we ended up in our meeting last week, we would revisit this issue in two to three weeks. That's what they said. We can revisit this at any time. They didn't put an end date to it, and they didn't put any, you know, put any handle on that.
Right. And that's hard to do, I understand. I think that businesses need to be able to plan. I mean, I think we'd be naive to think that nobody's going to decide to shut down during this, and, you know, they need to plan and tell their employees when they're going to open back up and things like that. And so, you know, if we did revisit it, I think that that would be helpful instead of an open-ended thing because we will have the flu season coming up here, and we'll have a second wave of this, and this could go on forever.
No question about that. From the enforcement side of it, I realize the holes that are in that and the difficulty in doing so, but I do want to say, if we do pass an ordinance that requires a merrymask, and there are going to be those who are going to say, I'm not doing it, it's not going to happen. There probably would be businesses that said, I'm not going to do it. Well, if we get another handful or 20 businesses to put that sign up that says you got to have a mask in here, if we get 50 or 100 people that all of a sudden said, I'm not going to wear a mask, but now they're wearing it, we've accomplished something. That's kind of my take on it. What I would like to see is that, I mean, again, without seeing or hearing the final ordinance, but what I listened to last night, I would like to see us just piggyback on to that ordinance, adopt that ordinance and go with it, and that way, all the citizens are going to know what to expect. There won't be a county rule and a city rule. I think we should plan on doing that. How the process is, can we do that right now? I don't know. I mean, I have to fall to the administrator on that one, but obviously would take two more votes besides mine, but I'm going to open it up to the commissioners again.
Mr. Chair, on Thursday, the reason I voted the way I did, and I assumed the majority of the board voted, because we were handed down a mandate from our governor. She, with no enforcement, no teeth in language, and she did not consult with any of the counties or the Health Department folks that do make recommendations and stuff, and basically that's the reason I voted against it. And I did state at that meeting that I'd be more than happy to revisit it one more time, but it was such a short fuse at the time there, and that was our result, that was our, that was our final decision. Okay? So today, I'm here and we're going to adopt the city's ordinance, which I have not seen. Evidently, it's not even available yet. I don't know if there's any enforcement issues in it. I would sure like to have a copy of that and set up another meeting sometime to revisit it. Would that be possible?
Yeah, just to echo your thoughts, Commissioner, I'm the same way. I mean, you know, special meetings don't bother me a bit. And I, you know, they're supposed to publish it today at some point, so, I mean, I'm okay with us revisiting this sooner than later, and definitely not two weeks, it could be two days. I'm available, but I'm a lot like Commissioner White, you know. Again, one of the, one of the reasons, not the only reason that I voted against it on Thursday, but one of the reasons was, you know, we got that at 1:00 in the afternoon and really didn't have option A, option B type of thing. And the city has thrown out option A and option B right now, and we have other things to look at. So consistency makes sense. But anyway, so I'm not prepared to do it today without looking at.
Well, and I'm not, I don't think any of us would do that. I mean, even though I'm for this, I wouldn't do that because we don't know the final language. And I think Jason would even say that. What I would like to do, though, is the minute that the administrator receives the ordinance from the city, even though it won't, will not have been published yet, that we get that, then you get that to us, and then we can respond with a meeting, even though it hasn't been published. I mean, we all read, or we look at or used to the Salina Journal, and who knows when that's going to come in there? And that's by law, that state statute, that it has to be published in that paper, and when that gets published, then the ball gets rolling. But until that happens, and they haven't covered our meeting in months, and there wasn't anybody at the city last night, their city meeting. But, I mean, that ordinance, if the city gives us what they have drafted, then we can call a special meeting even for the next day and adopt it immediately upon release of the press part of it, or the, you know, the state statute that requires it to be printed. That would be my.
Or again, not adopted, but we can.
Or not adopted. Yeah, I don't mean to say we're going to do it.
Right, right.
And I appreciate the fact that you want to see it, you want to read it. Hearsay from me or anyone else doesn't mean it because they were drafting final language last night even as they were working, so.
Mr. Chairman, when we had our last meeting and we voted, the problem I had with the mandate was, first, the enforcement of it, there was no enforcement, there was no guidelines, there was no language to that. Second, in reading that, anyone and everyone could opt out of wearing a mask under the governor's. And I understand that if it changes the attitude or mindset of a few, that's positive, but I thought we can do better than what that was. We can come up with something better. And we took the first step, said we would readdress it, and I'm more than happy to do that. But I think our administration needs to see the language, the statute, and work logistics of that out, whether or not we can copycat that, make sure that we have the ability, whether it be in the enforcement or whatever, and bring something back. I'd be more than happy to, the minute we can draft something, to go over, to call a special meeting and bring it back to the table.
I would be very surprised if we couldn't adopt, even though we would probably put our own numbers on the top of the ordinance or whatever it is, adopt their language.
I don't believe.
All we have to do is copy it.
I don't believe we can, we don't have the ability to use the police department outside of.
No, that's what I'm saying. We can change a slight amount of the language there, but.
Exactly. And that's why our administration needs to see the language and see what we can do to work out those logistics.
And if, if there is no end date in the cities, no, I would not be supportive of just doing exactly what they do. So, I mean, I do think that some conversation needs to come out about that.
Well, Monty, I would, my position there would be, I don't know how we can say there's going to be an end date. We have no idea when this is going to back up a little bit. Jason, you have a comment?
Well, I was going to just suggest that even if we can't, of course, we can't predict an end date, but at least to have something in there that says, that specifies that, you know, what the review timetable looks like. So whether it's every two weeks, three weeks, whatever, that says, okay, we are going to look at this in conjunction with the picture in Saline County of COVID, and that gives at least some predictability, I think, to the residents and to businesses and even to us about when we're looking at it, when we're making decisions about whether it's still necessary or not, as opposed to just leaving it wide open at the end and.
We do, we do use, when we do a burn ban, we'll have, we'll set a burn ban into effect for this amount of time, and then emergency management will come in and say, we need to extend this and other, and bring it back to us. So I think that's following something of what Jason's saying there.
I think, Monty, that, I mean, I like the language that he just used on a review standpoint that, I mean, if we were to say we were going to review this weekly, and that time, we could end it or put a continuance to it. But if we were to do that and never, you know, something along a seven-day period, every week we're going to review it with the potential to remove our stamp on it.
I would suggest, just given the incubation period that we're working with, that probably every two weeks would be a timeframe to look at, because then we can also look back over an incubation period and really know better what's happening. The shorter the data span, the harder it is to try and kind of see what's happening. So that would just be probably a better timeframe to look at.
Well, if I can get a consensus then from my fellow commissioners, that we instruct our administrative staff to, you know, be very vigilant when they receive this, obviously get it off to our county counselor, and send each commissioner a copy of that immediately and for our review, and we'll take it from there.
I can.
That's fine, as long as, you know, a vote is not assumed.
No.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it's still business as usual, so to speak, but we would still follow the protocol to, on whether, how you bring something up to vote or not vote, or it still takes three people to be able to do anything.
Right. Couple of other points that I would like to make, and Mr. Chair, you brought it up about the Health Board, is philosophically, I do not believe that we're a rubber stamp for any lower commission or agency. I think we're the elected officials. You know, the buck stops here, and the public has the right to talk to us, and we have the right to overturn any commission, whether it's the planning commission or the Health Commission. The other comment I'd like to make is from the speaker who said, put your personal interests aside. I've been up here 14 years, I've never voted on anything that would affect me personally. I'm doing this for the best of the community, and I take offense at that.
I should have clarified, and I apologize to anyone that that might have insinuated that this board should be taken not exactly what the Health Department says to do. That is my personal feeling, and I should have clarified that, and I apologize to anyone who might have misunderstood me in that because it certainly wasn't clear, and I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I don't like to wash my laundry out in public, but I said on that advisory board, there was no vote taken. You've referred to a vote that the board took, and there was no vote taken by the advisory board. Also, during that advisory board special meeting, there was conversations, there was a lot of conversation about how, how unimpactful the governor's mandate was and how it really wasn't, didn't have the teeth to do much of anything. And that's why I voted the way I did. Even though I said on that advisory board, I appreciate the people on the advisory board, they're good people, they're sincere, honest, hardworking, and intelligent, but I voted as an individual up here.
Again, that is a mistake on my part, and I apologize once again to use that word "vote." I knew there wasn't a vote taken, but listening to our director last week, he did say it was the consensus. I think, I don't want to put birds in your mouth, but the health advisories.
I think the consensus, and maybe I wasn't very clear about it, but the consensus was in support of mask use. At the time of the advisory council meeting, of course, we didn't have the governor's mandate, but a lot of our conversation was around those issues of enforcement relating back to issues that we saw with stay-at-home order and inability to try and enforce a lot of her mandates and that. But it was the consensus that mask use or a mask mandate would have benefits, but without teeth, that it wasn't as worth the paper it's written on.
And I'll just apologize again for any misconception that I'm speaking on behalf of the commission or commissioners, not case. It is my opinion, just like Commissioner Shadwick or Commissioner Sparks and Wees and White. They, what they say is their opinion, and that's the way it should be taken. And if I've left the perception that I'm speaking on behalf of the commission, that's not the case. It is all my personal opinions, in which I think everyone should be able to express that that sits up here. So are we clear then, Mr. Smith Haynes, on your direction that you're receiving from us for the?
Yes, so just to reiterate, as soon as I see something in writing, I will distribute it to the commissioners, to the Health Department, to our county counselor, and we will schedule a special meeting if we get it in time to do that.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for enduring the conversation we've got here, but it's obviously an important issue. We will move to action items now, and we will start with item number one.
RFA number 181-20, fiscal year '21, Adult Comprehensive Plan Applications and Budget Grant. Annie Grievous, Director, and Sherri Kraus, Grant Budget Specialist, Community Corrections.
Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning. And I believe Annie wanted to be a part of this. Is she available on the phone?
My understanding, she's on the phone, but I think she has muted herself, so if she has a correct question, she can chime in.
We, our first grant, the Adult Comprehensive Plan Application and Budget, we're asking for approval of that. This is a yearly grant that we receive from the state. I'd welcome any questions about it. It would be the comprehensive plan grant application is what we'd be looking at.
I'm looking for my RFA, and I don't.
Sherri, just a quick question.
Sure.
Excuse me, Chair. Is that, and I just, was there special things that had to be done or anything? I see that there was an increase of 42, roughly $43,000. Or did they, the state just say, oh, you guys need some extra money this year? Or did they, the state just say, oh, you guys need some extra money this year?
I know there are several things they look at when they determine the allocation for different districts. One thing I'm sure that went into that increase is our rise in ADP. Our average ADP over the course of this year is-
And what does that mean?
Average daily population, our, the, the population we supervise. It is 50 higher than it was last year, which is a, a large jump. I don't know what's driving that at this point or if it will stay that way or not.
Thank you.
So for my own satisfaction, this is a, an application for a grant?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment before we move, vote on this? I would take a motion from commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDOC FY '21 Adult Services Application and Budget as presented by staff.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 181-20, Adult Comprehensive Plan Applications and Budget Grant. All of those, is there any further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sherri. We'll move to item number two.
RFA number 182-20, fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '23, Reinvestment Grant Renewal Application and Budget. Sherri Kraus, Grant Budget Specialist, Community Corrections.
Okay, Sherri.
We are also seeking commission approval for the FY '21 through '23 reinvestment grant. This grant has been available to caps over the last three years. This is a little different than our annual one in that it is actually a three-year renewal for them, if approved. They serve our, our juvenile clients. And there's some information about that. They, they use the nurturing parenting program, CANS and Parent Project to work with them and with their families.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Any public comment? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move I, we approve by signature the FY '21-23 renewal of the KDOC Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Grant Application and Budget as presented by staff.
Second motion.
It's been sec, moved and seconded that we approve RFA 182-20, the reinvestment grant renewal application and budget. Further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
RFA number 183-20, fiscal year '21, Behavioral Health Grant Application and Revised Budget. Sherri Kraus, Grant Budget Specialist, Community Corrections.
Sherri.
Thank you. This is for our behavioral health grants. This, again, is funds that we are able to apply for from KDOC each year. This covers salary of one high-risk ISO, which is Intensive Supervision Officer, our program provider, who offers multiple cognitive programs to our clients, and also a recovery specialist, who is actually a contractual provider, working with CKF, with our clients.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Public comment? Take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDOC FY '21 Behavioral Health Grant Application and Revised Budget as presented by staff.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 183-20, Behavioral Health Grant Application and Revised Budget. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Item number four.
RFA number 184-20, fiscal year '21, Juvenile Services Grant Application and Budget. Sherri Kraus, Grant Budget Specialist, Community Corrections.
Sherri.
This is our last one we have for you today. This is our juvenile services funding. It covers our ISOs that work with juvenile clients and services for them, as well as facility costs. As you can see from the breakout on the RFA, it covers many programs that we offer.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Public comment? I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDOC FY '21 Juvenile Services Grant Application and Budget as presented by staff.
Second, second motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve 184, RFA 184-20, Juvenile Services Grant Application and Budget. Further comments?
Any congratulations on 10 years with the county?
Thank you.
All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
And thank you, ladies, for coming. Thank you for the, your hard work at the community corrections.
Thank you.
We will move to item number five.
RFA number 185-20, Coronavirus Relief Fund Advisory Committee Member Appointments. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So last Tuesday, your commission approved a resolution which will allow us to receive $11,26,434 in federal funding passed through the state of Kansas, known as the Coronavirus Relief Funding, which is a part of the CARES Act passed by Congress in March of this year. The funds will be dispersed to the county approximately July 15th and must be fully expended by December 30th. As part of your commission's action last week, you also formed a Coronavirus Relief Advisory Committee to provide recommendations to your commission on the direct aid plan, which is required to be submitted to the state's Office of Recovery by August 15th. Expression of interest forms were released to the public on June 30th with a deadline of yesterday at 1:00 p.m. Your commission met in special session yesterday at 3:00 p.m. to review the forms received. And I will say a big thank you to all the folks who submitted expression of interest forms. Despite the quick turnaround on this and despite the fact that the county's website decided to hiccup during this critical week here, we received close to 20 applications that your commission reviewed yesterday afternoon. Very much appreciate all the interest in this. Very much look forward to working with the committee starting next Monday. And so, Mr. Chair, I would ask that the commission appoint members to the CRF Advisory Committee and I'd be happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. I want, I too want to thank all of the people that applied. I think there were nearly 30 applications, somewhere around 25 to 30 applications for this. And as Phil has indicated, it was a quick turnaround. Commissioners looked at every single one of the applications, tried to go by the guidelines that were handed down by the state and the Spark Committee on how we were to go about presenting this. The people that were selected are pillars in the community with, with tons and tons and tons of experience in doing things like this and public service and on and on. I could go on. So anyway, thank you for all of that. So at this point in time, are there comments or questions from, from commissioners? Or is there any public comment regarding this Corona Relief Fund Advisory Committee Member Appointments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint a seven-member advisory committee on the coronavirus relief funding and appoint that committee to Tom Bell, Kristen Gunn, Dirk Hutchinson, Charles Roth, Priscilla Smith, Michelle Barkley, and Philip Smith Haynes.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 185-20, Coronavirus Relief Fund Advisory Committee Member Appointments, as so mentioned. Are there, are there further comments? I, I want everyone to know that one of the caveats that we attached to this yesterday is that the administrator potentially could call in any staff member that he wanted to, that with, you know, with some input, but wouldn't have a vote on that. But they would be able to clarify some things for us, the same as I would assume that they would with any other agency or person that would apply for some of the funds. So that is kind of the guidelines that we use. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 185-20, Coronavirus Relief Fund Advisory Committee Member Appointments. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries five to zero. We'll move to item number six.
RFA number 187-20, 2021 Saline County Budget. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. So this is a follow-up to a discussion that your commission had last week. And at this time, I am requesting some action in terms of providing direction to my office on what you would like to see as a budget for county operations for 2021, so that we may publish a notice of a public hearing on the budget for August 11th. We do have a little bit of time here, so I'd be happy to take direction today and not come back, but if you have questions or other things, we could revisit this again next week if we need to. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission has about the budget. Take public comment and see where we go from there.
We, we all have a copy of the budget before us, the proposed budget. Let me throw something out and you can either say yes, no, and, and whatever, is that we just go through this, there's 30 pages, we just go through it page by page. If someone has a comment on that page, we'll bring it up at that time. If they don't, we're going to page two, just, just, just right in order. So is that favorable to everyone or is there another fashion that you want to go through it?
That's fine.
Page number one, the only question I would have is on the general courthouse. It has equipment and postage for $8,500 and then another line item is expense postage, another $2,200. Does that mean anything or, I mean, I'm nitpicking there, but-
The equipment is the rental of the actual postage machine.
Postage equipment.
And then the other line for miscellaneous expense is for miscellaneous, you know, ink and the little sealers and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Well, there's nothing else. We'll move to page two. Any questions, comments?
I'm just happy that we were able to include a funding for 1% increase in employee wages. I know that that's not always what's wanted, but at the same time, our counterparts at the city are not, are not doing that and in fact have done furloughs. So I was happy that we were able to keep our folks hired and at least give them a little bit of a bump.
Are there, are any comments on page two? Is that, and my, my copy still shows that, was that retreat taken out of that new, the new proposal here? Yeah, it's out? Okay. Page three. Page four. I, I have a question and it goes, I mean, it goes, it coincides with page four, but it's on, on down the line. And that is the, the EIP Sheriff Office, $315,000. I mean, would, would it better be better served if that was under the sheriff's office budget? Or should that be separate? I mean, there's $315,000 for the EIP.
Are you talking about page nine now?
Yeah, I mean, in page nine, there's that EIP, but my point is, should that be under the sheriff's office budget?
Well, the-
Go ahead.
Improvement program, and again, I will say, this is just the way I found things when I showed up. This is not something I designed, but the equipment improvement program is not specific to the sheriff's office. It so happens that the sheriff's office is the only one in the general fund who submitted anything this year. But I know in past years, other offices have submitted things and I believe that's why it's in a separate line.
And my request then would be relevant to a separate conversation at a future time to realign that line item into this other portion.
Yeah, I think how we do EIP, TIP and CIP is something that is fruitful conversation for a future time. Yeah.
Amen. Mr. Chair, if I, if I may though, because that was going to be one of my points, is the EIP. And, and I'll just throw this out here. I don't think it's time for, I, I don't think it's appropriate to wait for another time. I've been fighting this for five years and it's time to take, stake a stand. EIP is not to fund ever the minutia of every department. And if I look at what the sheriff has here, cooling racks for $800, proof boxes for $3,000, that sort of thing. The sheriff has a budget of $8.2 million. I'm looking at, he's got equipment repair, equipment service, supplies, buildings, equipment jail, maintenance building, prisoners' meals, supplies building, supplies jails. Those are just some of the items that this EIP could be used at. And I will make the, the motion at an appropriate time that we take that out of the EIP for this year.
And a question to you would be then, in other words, have an E, an equipment line in his budget and he doesn't, he's only, for, just to say $200,000?
It just-
And then he can spend it any way he wants.
This, this minutia, he's already, he's already being funded $8.2 million for all this stuff. The EIP for sheriff's vehicles for $261,000, that makes sense to me, because that's not an ongoing thing. Cooling racks are an ongoing thing. And, you know, we fought in the past about carpet base, you know, that's, that's in his $8.2 million. He needs to find areas to do that instead of tapping the EIP fund. I think it's just, it's time to change that.
So to proceed with what we're trying to accomplish today, though, is there action needed on your part, Monty, to, to say that?
I will do that at some point, yeah, because I, from what I understand, when we start looking down at choices, I'm okay with passing a budget today, but I think it's appropriate that we vote on certain things. That's not going to be my only one today, but-
Okay.
I also don't think that in this political environment, it's appropriate to spend $8,000 on elite ops cameras. So, I mean, that's in, in the EIP also.
Okay. Page five. Page six. I will start that conversation under human resources. I, I see that, that the recommendation from the, from the administrator is to not fund the generalist position at $31,500. We heard from the Human Resources Director as to why she needs that position. And I, I would be interested in, in hearing from the administrator as to why he says we don't need it. Or is that an appropriate question?
So my recommendation is that that be deferred to a future year. I do think that we will need another position in the Administrative Resource Center at some point in time. However, one of the recommendations that's in the capital improvement plan this year is to look at restructuring sort of the side of the second floor and shifting things around. And I think that has the potential to get us some more efficiencies in the office and free up a little bit of time for the human resources staff. And so I think it would be appropriate for us to try and garner those efficiencies first before we start adding staff, particularly, because I don't know where we had physically parked the body right at the moment. And I also think that the workload- And I also think that the workload for HR will be significantly impacted by what happens with the jail vote this fall, and so I would like to wait and see what happens with that before we move on to something like this. I reserve the right to bring it back in 2022, but I don't recommend it in 2021.
Are there comments from commissioners?
Yeah, the timing of it is, I trust you on it.
I'm getting lost in the format of what we're doing here. I thought we was going through this, and then there was going to be proposals at the end. Are we to be making our proposals as we go to amend this budget?
I was thinking like you that, no, wait till the end, but that's up to the chair, I guess.
If that's the way you perceive it, then I appreciate you speaking up.
I guess the way that we're doing it right now, Commissioner Ruiz, makes sense to me, because I'd like to hear everybody's comments before I make any sort of motion. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, page seven.
I did go over with the administrator yesterday about the coroner, and I don't want to nitpick anything, but that just, I really don't kind of get the whole coroner thing anyway, over the last six years of sitting up here in a budget, but that's really not up to us. I mean, you know, when a doctor says that they've got to use a coroner, they've got to use a coroner, and they get paid per thing, so that's, I just thought that was interesting.
That's a state statute that we have to fund a coroner, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, this is a substantial jump in funding, absolutely acknowledge that, but we have been over budget in this budget for at least the last four years, so that's why I'm like, okay, well, we ought to just fund what we're actually spending.
Any other comments? Page eight. Pre-trial program, emergency management. Page nine. We've kind of touched on the appropriations, I'll read the others that are in there. Planning and zoning, which is relatively no increase, drug court, which is very, very minimal increase, and juvenile center, which is actually a decrease, and move to the appropriations, and Monty has expressed himself in that one. Anyone else? Page 10, which includes EMS, there's a $200,000 increase there, and that's on equipment reserve.
Yes, so EMS includes an annual appropriation to the city for the staffing, but also the county pays for an ambulance on occasion, and that's not an every-year expense, so they, there was an ambulance that was purchased at the, it was budgeted for 2018, I think it was actually purchased in January of 2019, so we moved the funding and took it out of CIP, but there's not a budget for an ambulance in 2020, but I contacted the city, and they do plan on purchasing in 2021.
A question on the EMS budget. Does our staff sit with their staff and go over their budget and revenues and expenses to come up with a formula of what the county pays for that contract?
We haven't. So it's interesting, because we have a number of different contractual relationships with the city of Salina, and they all are a bit different in nature, so the, on the previous page, we didn't talk about it, but there's one for animal control. That one has a specific inflator each year. EMS appears to be fairly flat for a number of years. Then we'll get to Fire District Four. That is based on the city's actual expenses each year, so they're all done a little bit differently. I think that there would potentially be some value in aligning those into a more sensible way to do that at some point in the future, but we haven't gotten there yet with the things that have happened this year, so.
Okay, any other questions, or the page includes the appraisers, a slight increase, and it looks like it's by and large within the wage situation, employee development and wage increases. Conservation District remains level. Livestock and Expo Center. I think part of our conversation here would be probably held up by whatever happens at our executive session today, from my viewpoint, anyway. Any other comments?
Nope, I agree.
Page 11, mental health. They are the only appropriated agency that asks for an increase, $11,580 increase. OCCK is level. The election is actually asking for less, I'll take that back. Tell me if I'm reading this right, Phil, they're asking for 126, and your recommendation is 96. Am I reading that correctly? And actually, it is the...
That is the conversation that we had previously with the Corr.
It's an adjustment from the...
Yeah.
$30,000 has moved to publications on part-time and printing, so it's basically a wash. Economic development, $124,000 was requested. We're taking $60,000 out of that from the airfare subsidy that it's not necessary with the airport, so that's good news, we're getting down 60 grand there. Senior services.
I will ask that, at the appropriate time, that we do not fund the reception cashier position for multiple reasons. One, and I'll get to it later, I think we're getting into a funding creep that really was not part of our original agreement when we took over the senior center years ago. Second of all, if anybody can do the math, that is an incredibly per-hour expensive position, and is not consistent with what is being paid around the city. And I know that there's some talk about, oh, we can use this person other places during the day. Well, again, there's $719,000 budget. You can either increase food prices to fund that, or you can find it somewhere else in your budget, but it's inappropriate in my mind.
Any other comments? Road and Bridge Department?
The one, the one, make sure I'm on the right line. On the hiring of the two new truck drivers, he was funding that with a decrease, if you could help me out, County Administrator.
Yeah, that's on page 14, in the gravel road upgrade.
Right, and I, I believe he has a need for those two drivers. I'm just concerned that he takes it out of a budget line. This year, we plug in those two people, and next year, he needs that road aggregate for his edge wedging back in his budget, so I, I'm just hoping this isn't a backdoor attempt to get to employees and then later on, have that back in the budget. Either he needs that edge wedge product, or he doesn't.
Well, the reason that Mr. Fishel said that that was an appropriate place to reduce is because he has typically not spent that over the last couple of years, that a lot of that has just gone, you know, been transferred at the end of the year to capital, and that's why he recommended that's a place to take that out of, so.
There's a line item here on insurance, and it's $40,000, and is insurance for the Road and Bridge separate than what we have for our overall policy?
I'll let Hannah address that one.
Yeah, I think that's something that we might have to just kind of look at. I know that we have some special policies that are directly associated with inland marine, some of their equipment that they have out there. I'd have to look into that just a little bit further to find out what it is that Road and Bridge actually covers with that insurance piece.
Right, I just assume under our umbrella part, I mean, I don't see it at the Sheriff's Office, I don't see it anywhere else, and I'm just wondering why they wouldn't be under our big umbrella policy.
Well, I think they are for the buildings, but I think this is, as Hannah was saying, some specialized equipment. The amount hasn't changed, so we can get you an answer.
Well, I guess, again, I'd be interested, who are they getting the insurance from? I mean, who are they paying that 40, same thing?
I think it's all through what used to be Travelers, and now will be One Beacon, but I think it's just because of their equipment that it's appropriate to take it out of the Road and Bridge fund, because it's related specifically to an operation that we wouldn't have before, but for that function. But we can bring you more information on that.
Phil, this is kind of petty, but there's a line item, borrow pit under Road and Bridge, and for $10,000. I'd like some clarification on that, if you could. I didn't even realize Saline County had a borrow pit, and why a $10,000 expenditure, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Could get that information as well.
Commissioner Shadwick, and I will piggyback on your comments with the Sheriff's Department, we're actually seeing the same thing, aren't we, on Road and Bridge? I mean, when you go down through here for every single thing that they spend money on...
It looks like it could be cleaned up a little bit easier, let's, you know, when you're starting, when you're starting to differentiate between batteries and antifreeze and motor blades, I would think that as an accountant, you would sit there and think that there's got to be a better way to just lop that into supplies.
And those are things...
And again, I'm not saying, and again, what I guess, what I'm getting back to, Mr. Chair, is I'm not saying that the sheriff doesn't need those things, I'm just saying...
I agree.
I'm hoping that it gets cleaned up, I guess, by the next, by the next time.
Yeah, and I don't want, I don't want to start nitpicking every line item, that, you know, that $5,000 for batteries, or $1,100 for antifreeze, I mean, you know, if they need that stuff, they need it, that's under the supplies part of it, so, any rate. Any other comments on the Road and Bridge? Okay, Noxious Weed Department, Road Fund, Weed Fund, looks like there's a slight increase Those, that's under revenues, though, I'm sorry, the first part, and the Noxious Weed Department itself is pretty flat. Special Road Bridge Machinery Fund. Noxious Weed Capital Outlay. Equipment Reserve, $69,000. Employee Benefits Fund, $5,500,000. Those are revenues, is that correct, Phil?
It's correct.
A question on the revenue side of that, is that just, is that payroll deductions, or is that, what all falls? I believe your benefits are, they're listed there, but in the capers, is that the employee share, or is that the total?
That's the county share.
Just the county share, and you're calling that a revenue?
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, the revenues to this fund are tax revenues, and then the expenses...
So the difference that half a million or better, that, that's just, comes out of the general budget, and it's just an expense.
That's from the fund balance in that fund.
Okay.
Any questions on the next page, page 17? These are all income-based, I think, aren't they, Phil? Revenue?
Yes, so the special alcohol and drug and special parks and rec are just, we spend about what we bring in.
And then goes to Administration. The Department Head for Administration, is, I assume that is you?
This is the Health Department Fund.
Health Department, it's two steps up, I'm sorry. That clears that up fast. There are several pages here for the Health Department throughout, I don't know if anyone has any questions on those.
My other question is, I think I asked the administrator previously, but I'd like him to let the others hear it, is how many counties have home health departments that you've been associated with?
I'll say it's pretty rare, it's not a typical function.
Now, is that, is that, Monty and I, if I'm reading this, you're talking about the $748,000 for that department, for that section?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a home health, and actually, they bring in 527, and they spend 748. I just, I was actually, because it was brought up probably five years ago, you know, whether to have it or not, and I'm not, I'm not making a stand or anything, I just thought it was interesting that most...
I hadn't given it a thought, yeah. Okay, and I'm up into the Special Road Construction One-Mill Fund.
You have those numbers adjusted, I see now.
Yes.
Those are revenues, I believe, is that... Those are revenue, I believe, is that what the red is, means is revenue? Non-departmental revenues?
The red is just the note, the revenues are shaded in green and the expenditures are not shaded, they're just in white.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question here?
Go right ahead.
Mr. Administrator, back under the special road construction, under that special construction, under the one-mill fund, we have, let's say, the revenue comes in at 671,000 and we have a, we're going to spend 1,250,000. Is that what that is?
That's correct.
Okay, and where would the other 600,000 come from?
It's the fund balance in the fund based on what they haven't spent in the past, so.
And where does that show up at?
So that's actually on the state forms rather than on this, so you should have also received the packet of state forms, which is.
Yes, in the back.
So, yeah, I believe it's page 11 or so. Yeah, page 11 is the special bridge, which is the two-mill, and page 12 is the one-mill. And so you can see the beginning unencumbered balance and then the expenditure to get to that at the alarm rate.
And that's after looking at this, is there, I mean, down the road, is there another way to make that a little, another phase right here on this here to make that where you can see that? Or is that what this is all about, is putting this third page out here somewhere else?
Let me see if I'm understanding the questions. So you would like to see in this format, the beginning balances for each of the funds as well?
I'm just saying, to me, it'd be, just sit back and say, here's what we've got, here's where we're spending it, and here's where we're going to get rest of it in that fund?
Okay.
But that's just.
Yeah, I mean, I could, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, that would not be complicated to do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if I'm on the same level as everyone else here, we're up into the special construction. Have I skipped something?
Nope.
And that is the two-mill fund. County farm fund?
So the only thing I'll note on that, so, and again, this is not a budgeted fund, but I would love some commission direction on that. The fair did request an extra 10,000. I don't have that in there, I've kept them at 20. If you all want me to give them 30, please let me know that.
There's no fair this year?
Well, we're talking about 2021, Commissioner.
Excuse me.
And, I mean, that could be reflected in, and how we approach this budget too, in my opinion, because we gave them the 20,000 last for 2020 and now there's no fair. Have we, have we advanced that money to them? Do they, how does that?
I don't know if we've cut the check yet, I'd have to look at the accounting system to see.
Okay.
I mean, if they don't, if they don't need the money, we could have a conversation, but my understanding is they're doing some activities, but it's going to be very limited. It's certainly not going to be.
I think the 4H part of it is, I don't know.
It's just the 4H part, they're going to have a.
Can you come up to the mic, please?
Good morning, Rick Lehmer, Expo Center Director. So I just talked to him this morning. Basically, what it's going to be is they're bringing animals in for one night. They are going to show cattle and ag haul the next morning and leave. They're going to have a 4H dog show in Kenwood Hall. They are going to bring the hogs and sheep in to have a show in Barn Two, which is just, I mean, all the animals are there for one day, they show, they go home. They're going to bring horses in for one day, possibly show, go home, they'll have 4H building exhibits, the kids will bring them in, they'll be judged, and they'll go home. Nothing's open to the public. All grandstand events are canceled, all ag haul events are canceled.
Just as an FYI, do they, do we charge the fair for use of our facilities?
We do, and we also charge them electricity usage.
It just, it just seems like a convoluted system that we give them money to pay us back.
4H, 4H events are half price that we have over there, but like, for instance, canine capers during the week, that's a half price deal on that.
Okay. Rick, you might know the answer to this. The extension service mill tax that they, that they bring in, some of that goes back to the fair board?
I don't have the answer for that, Commissioner.
I just didn't know how that was used or what that amount is.
I don't, I'm not privy to that info, so I don't know.
Do you know, Roger?
I do not. The way I understand it, I mean, and just in visiting with Carl, is that Ottawa County and Sling County both have mill levies that go into the 4H extension office that's, that they handle and basically, and I don't know a bunch more, I've never seen any.
Yeah, that's not really related to the fair as the week. It is, the 4H is an ongoing program throughout the year and they support that program, but that.
Correct, but some of that support happens at the fair for fair functions and ribbons and trophies and.
No, ribbons and trophies are actually what you're giving them the 20,000 for.
I see, okay.
Yeah. So I'm just looking at the financial system here and it does not appear that we have cut a $20,000 check out of the farm fund this year, so.
I don't want to get into it now, but it, I'm, now that I'm thinking about it, it confuses me, the fair versus the 4H, you know, Tri Rivers Fair is one entity, the 4H Club is another.
And typically, like the Tri Rivers Fair, they'll have open class exhibits for the people in the county, where 4H has their own set of, like, their 4H kids bring in their exhibits. Same with the beef show, that's, that's a 4H event, where the demo and all that are fair events. Demo, draft horse show, rodeo, all that are the Tri Rivers Fair events. But then there's separate 4H events for 4H kids.
Yeah, typically, a county fair has both 4H classes and what they call open class, which other, there's, the 4H kids are judged against each other and then there's an entry where anybody can enter and those are judged separately. It's typically how it works. I did write a memo to the commission earlier this year trying to clarify the relationship between the different entities, I could recirculate that if that would be helpful.
Okay. All right, thank you, Rick. So, any other questions on page 23, which is the?
Yes, I'm sorry to be making this meeting a little go longer, but, yeah, my concerns are with the senior center's request for capital improvements. Again, I think that we're getting into a little bit of a mission creep or expense creep going on there. Historically, we've funded them at 300,000 and, you know, they're going to have 100-some thousand dollars next year, they're showing less in income and they're up to 719,000 dollars in expenses. That doesn't include the new position that they asked for and that doesn't include this, which gets almost to a million dollars. I don't think that we can look at that and just blindly okay that. I am not saying that the windows aren't needed or that the circle drive isn't needed or that the storage building isn't needed. I'm saying that we should identify them and not fund them. And I think that once you put it into a capital improvements, there's no reason for anybody to donate to this or there's no reason for anybody to look for grants because it's just 100% on the taxpayers at this point. I'm not saying the taxpayers don't have some skin in the game on this one, but 100% I have a problem with, especially when they've got income going down. So similar to their recent upgrade to their building with the kitchen and the dining area, one-third was paid for by taxpayers, one-third by grants, and one-third by donations. And I'd like to take that out of there, saying, we would like you to start looking at a better formula than just having the taxpayers fund the entire thing.
The 164,000, if I remember, and I don't have that page in front of me, but the 120 of that was the circle drive, is that correct?
That's correct, and I did, you and I had a brief conversation about that, Mr. Chair, and I did speak with Rosie and she said she did not expect that that would actually cost that much. That was, she felt that that was kind of an inflated estimate, but that was the first thing she got from the architect and she believes that she can whittle that down.
Okay, well, that having been said, I'm going to piggyback onto what Commissioner Shadwick said, and that circle drive is specific to Meals on Wheels. And I would like to see specific donations that go to Meals on Wheels go to Meals on Wheels expenses and, if you see what I'm saying. And, and part of the job description even says writes and administers grants for existing and new senior programs, services, et cetera. So I'm 100% on board with what Monty is saying. So, and I guess that comes to, to the end of the program, when we pull things back. All right.
Six hundred thousand dollars for communication systems?
Yes, sir.
And how are we coming on that project?
Where are you at now, Mike?
Same thing on capital improvements.
On the next.
I'm still a capital improvement. It's right above what the senior center is asking for, it's actually the number one, one thing.
So, Commissioner White, we do have a recommendation from the consultant, finally, that has involved some back and forth. So that recommendation does not yet have a specific dollar amount attached to it, so the 600,000 is admittedly a plug number at this point, but yes, you should be getting a report on that very soon.
But you're confident that 600,000 will be sufficient?
That is based on amortizing the cost of the system over a 15-year period. So 600 times 15, I'm confident will get us there, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions there on that page?
Yeah, just a quick one, thank you, Mr. Chair, is that, under, under the Expo Capital Improvement Fund, and I apologize, I'm sure it's somewhere, but I can't, what happens if we go on and we need to build the warm-up arena there at the Expo Center this year? Does this show up anywhere?
This is just the first year of the five-year plan of costs associated with the improvements that are proposed in the, proposed lease from the city of Salinas. So that does not include any other enhancements that the commission chooses to make, such as a warm-up arena.
And, I mean, I'll add that the 219,000 isn't a given, depending upon our contract negotiations. If we don't have a contract, I don't see any reason to put 219,000 into Expo improvements. But that's to be determined here in a little, little bit, I think.
Well, I think you still can put it in the budget, whether you spend it or not, it's a different thing.
You can, but I don't want to. That's just one vote.
I get it, I get it, yeah.
Okay, was there anything else there?
Nope.
Move to page 24, which now we get into the Health Department Improvement Fund. Any questions there?
Nope.
And you can start in on the fire districts.
That goes the rest of the pages, they almost done it?
Yes, it does. So just in the interest of time, I will say that the fire districts, there were very minimal increases, I believe, I believe four of the fire districts didn't change anything on the expenditure side. Three of them had increases of, I think the biggest one was about 2,000, so they're pretty status quo. The mill levies will go up for many of them just as a function of the change in valuation, but they'll be higher than this year, but not as high as last year in most cases, so.
As far as the total expenditures for fire districts, so, aren't they funded by that mill levy that is within their fire district itself?
That's correct.
That doesn't come out of the general fund of the county?
Correct.
To go back to fire district number four, I know you touched on it earlier, the contract with city is for 93,000, that's pending information.
That's not an exact number, yeah.
And you said, how was there, how do they come to that number?
So what we do under that contract is when the city sets their budget, they calculate how much of their mill levy goes to provide fire services within the city limits of Salina. And then they give us a mill rate, that is the city's mill rate for fire service, and then our expense is whatever is the equivalent of that applied to the valuation within fire district number four.
Okay, so, fire district four cost us more than it generates in its mill levy and its property tax revenue. You're estimating it at 87,000 and you're looking at possible expenditures of, oh, I guess total is 92,000.
Yeah, the difference is a very slight carryover of 500 or so.
It seems like those should be a wash.
Yeah, the problem, they should be, the problem is actually a timing problem on that. So if we, if we don't have a little bit of carryover there, then we get into a situation where we have to essentially wait until December to make the payment to the city because we don't have enough cash in the fund to make that payment, so.
And I would assume their ISO rating for fire insurance and all of that would be better than what is given by, that the county, the rural departments have. I'm surprised it's, it's more expensive, but.
All right, any others? We'll move to page 30, which is of the last page, for those of you that are enduring all of. all of this. Kipser District, no increase there. That moves us to the action part of this thing.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate you going through page by page, because we've never done that in the past, and I think it's important for the public to, I mean, we're spending a lot of money here.
I'm just thinking, maybe I shouldn't have done that.
No, no, no. We got time. We got time.
But we do to move to the choice A or choice B, which is to instruct the county administrator to change line items or to proceed with the 2021 budget as presented.
Mr. Chair, would you like those in separate motions? Is that probably the easiest thing, and we vote on each one?
I would assume that would be as easy as, painless as anything.
Okay. Well, I'll get to my first one, that I talked about, is the EIPs. And I will, I will change a little bit my comments here. I do not want to punish the, I do not want to punish the sheriff for things that he needs, you know, especially after you brought up that Roden Bridge has put it in their budget. So, you know, number two, ice machine, number three, fryer, number four, proof boxes, number five, cooling racks, number six, evidence packing systems, and number seven, gas mask. I trust my, I trust the sheriff that he needs those things. And so, Mr. Administrator, if just next year we could clean up that EIP, I trust you that you could do that. I will not, I will stop making any points about that. You know, probably just needs to be moved over into his $8 million budget. Again, I don't want to punish him in saying he doesn't need them, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
I feel like you're on the verge of a motion.
Close.
And I was just going to check with the chair and see, since this is an RFA, did you want to take public comment before you start through the motions?
I could. I had it in my mind that I would be taking a public comment, but I wanted to do that after we've made the changes to it and before we.
Okay. So you would do individual motions and then a summary motion?
Individual motions to put it into the budget. And then before we go to choice A.
Gotcha.
Or choice B, I think that we're going to go to choice A and B, the way it looks. Because we're going to go by line items, we're going to approve that, and then we're going to come back to choice B, which is where I would take the public comment, because then it would be.
That makes total sense. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, that being said, I was on the verge, so.
Which verge?
Yeah, no. No, I mean, really, I would just, again, in the light of not wanting to punish the sheriff, I just want to clean up kind of the thing. I make a motion that we move number two, three, four, five, six, seven into his overall budget and deny number eight, the Elite Ops camera, for $8,000. That is a motion.
Commissioner, what page are you on?
14. No, nine, 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 nine at the very bottom.
And quite frankly, that's why I was starting off probably on the wrong foot, is, you know, to change them as we went along.
Yeah.
And page nine at the very bottom, and Monty wants to deny the item number eight on the EIP. I think, in the interest of time, and can we go on a consensus basis there without making every one of these a motion?
It's up to you.
I mean, I think, I think the consensus part of it is the way to go.
Okay.
I have a question. Commissioner, why that one item is the one you decided to take out? Do you have any knowledge of what he has, whether it needs to be replaced versus his gas mask or the evidence packing or any of that?
That's true. I think just, I think it's more of a political environment, the Elite Ops. I mean, I just think that if, when he made this motion, I don't think some of the things that had happened politically around the country. And my guess is, maybe I'm reading, or reading his mind too much, he might have not asked for that now.
Yeah, I don't know what an Elite Ops camera is without having the sheriff here to explain what that item is and why it's in. Is it body camera that they wear?
I'll attempt this, and you're correct, Commissioner, the sheriff would be much better able to explain this. But so, these are specialized camera systems for the, I'm going to call it the SWAT team. I know that's not what they call, SORT, I believe, is what they call it. And so, this is a new request. Most of the other things, like the evidence packing and those sorts of things, are replacements. But the cameras for SORT, this is a new system that the sheriff's requesting that they have not previously had.
All right. So yay or nay on the item eight for the commissioners?
Well, yay for me.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. That's three votes for the nay, meaning that you want that to leave that in there.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll preface that. If this is something the SWAT team is going into, I think the public seeing what's happening at some of these, it could be important for the safety of the officer, for the, for the safety of the possible victim or whatever. So I think more transparency is better.
It could be, although, as you have known from the last three years, once you put it in the budget, that's what, how they come to the commission.
All right, we're moving on. They're still in there. And that takes us through page nine, is that correct? I mean, if people have got something they need to speak up.
My next one's not till 12, so go ahead.
I'm, and I hate to, I'm on page 11, and that's the mental health. And not that mental health doesn't necessarily need it, but we have no other appropriated agency that's asked for any more money. And in today's environment, I just, I got a feeling that'll be four to one if I say that we need to cut that $11,000 out of there, but.
Not necessarily. I think, you know, we always ask that from the get-go, is, it was pretty brazen to ask for an increase in today's environment, but.
I just think we should stay with the 2020 budget and $289,593.
I said on that board, and I'll guarantee you, they need the funding due to the feds and the state cutbacks. And the need for mental health right now, due to this pandemic, is so immense. They are overloaded. They're trying to accommodate all the clients they can and still survive and keep the doors open, so.
Any other thoughts? We got, we got a.
Well, I just look at it as, as all the entities around the sheriff's office and everybody else that uses it, with the mental health and the issues we have with juvenile and everything else, I think that I'm all for leaving whatever we can or increasing it, you know.
We plugged $25,000 into the sheriff's office mental health.
Right, right.
Budget, just last year. And that money funds right back into central Kansas mental health.
But on the, in their defense, that is money that is spent. That is services that we have rendered to the county. So we're paying for a service, as opposed to just handing them $25,000.
Right.
That is funded. That is, that is an expense.
Yes, I understand that, but it's still, and it offsets an expense of theirs.
Okay. So where are you at on the consensus part of this?
I would like to freeze it at the 28, nine, or 289.
28, nine.
Okay. We'll take it back to 28, nine, or $289,593. And that brings us, I think, probably to page 12, Senior Services.
I would like that position removed entirely.
I'm on board.
I believe that Rosie has the ability, through some federal grants, to get her some part-time help. I know it might not be the most optimal for her to work, but she has a way of getting some funding there to take care of a receptionist cashier.
I concur.
That's enough to remove that 26, 686. Roden Bridge Department, that's 13, I think is where we're at.
I think we were just going to do a follow-up on the insurance, but I mean, I'm okay if we spend it.
I've got that earmarked.
I'm okay if we spend it. I just want to know how it's being, who spends it.
We're headed for page 14 or 15. 14 was Roden Bridge.
I'm good.
I haven't heard anything there, Noxious Weed Department.
I'm good.
I'm good with that. Now we're at the, I think, this might have been a special Roden Bridge Machinery Fund, two tandem axle dump trucks. Was, is there a question about that earlier? No?
There was none.
Okay. If I'm going too fast or skipping over something that somebody wants to, I'm going clear to page 18. Now we're into the, we're into the Health Department.
I'm good. My next one's at 23, so.
And that's where I'm headed. No change in the Special Road Construction Mill Fund, One Mill Fund, or the Two Mill Fund. I think those need to be funded. We're on page 23.
I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners about taking some of those out.
I want to, I want to, I want to go one above it, and, you know, and with, with the understanding this capital improvement program, capital outway for the Expo Center Improvement Fund, that it'd be dependent upon us receiving that contract. If we don't get the contract, then I don't want to fund the improvement.
I would go with that.
This year.
I concur.
Okay. You can handle that one? Now we go to the capital improvement part of it. Monty, that you wish to speak with, and we've just taken that. Well, let me, let me ask you this. There's two different things here. The capital improvement, Expo Improvement Fund, $164,000, and then we go down to capital improvement, Expo Improvements, $219,000. Which one is per the contract, supposedly?
The second one. So the Expo Capital, it's confusing. The Expo Capital Improvement Fund is the fund that was set up when the K-wood land was purchased. And that's where you collect the rent, the farm rents off of the ground down there and deposit it. And it has only really been used for some smaller odds-and-end type things. It's never been used for major projects. I believe, I'm making this up, because I obviously wasn't here, but my impression is that the intent was sort of to bank that money for future development down south. The Saline County Capital Improvement Plan, which encompasses all departments, is where money has been budgeted in the past for improvements at the existing Expo site. And so that's where that money that would be dependent upon whether you get a contract with the city of Salina is.
Well, I mean, my position would be that we, both of those are, the 164 and the 219 are contingent upon the contract.
The 164, again, is just money that's just sitting there as the balance in that fund that we budget to.
Okay. I'm getting it confused then. That is, that is money that's in a fund. We're not, we're not funding it?
Correct. Yeah. That fund does not receive any general fund support.
So that $164,000 doesn't, isn't part of the 52 million? Because, I mean, it's got on here.
It is part of the 52 million in the sense that it is a budgeted fund, which the auditor and I've had a conversation about that, because I don't think it should be. But it was set up as a budgeted fund when it was established. Again, this is the money that you get as rent on the K-wood land that is just accumulating in that fund.
Okay.
It's separate from the existing Expo Center site.
Red is an income.
Green is an income.
Okay. Then, because I'm lost here, with $164,000 that is, that is department request and county administrator recommended is $164,000.
That's just the balance in that fund. That's just the projected balance in that fund, which would be budgeted to be spent if needed. But again, like I said earlier, that's typically spent on tools and stuff that's needed for, I mean, it's very minor items.
Well, if we're budgeting something, we're funding it, aren't we? Or am I missing something here?
You could be funding it with stuff that's already in there. It's not new tax dollars.
Right. This is, this does not receive a penny of tax revenue. The only revenue source to this particular fund.
Okay.
Is the rent on the K-wood land. The, the next one, the Saline County Capital Improvement Plan, that is the one that you transfer tax money into on an annual basis.
Right.
Yeah.
So your concern is with the 219, Mr. Chair?
It comes into the capital improvement, I mean, the 219.
That's the one that you're concerned with?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, that is, I want that contingent upon the.
Understood, yeah.
Understood. We're with you on that.
Being as I'm talking, I'll just go ahead with one other one that I've got in here, and that is, nobody's said anything about this, the pavement at Roden Bridge for $150,000. What's that? Does anyone know?
I can.
They just trying to improve their roads at the Roden Bridge Department?
Yeah, they're trying to, hang on, I'll pull up their request from Darren. I have it here. It's replacing the deteriorated pavement. It's about 210,000 square feet of mostly asphalt surface, which includes the employee parking lot, the maintenance division building and truck barn area, the vehicle fueling area, and then the roads through the site.
My position in this year's climate is that that would, that is one that we can pull, that I would like to see pulled out.
I'd like to throw in, I'll get some comments from Commissioner Shadwick, I'm sure, but just because it's budgeted doesn't need, mean it's going to be approved.
Except that department is the number one person that comes to us and says, "You've already approved this."
But we still have to go through the process to officially approve that expenditure when the time comes.
Agreed. With that caveat, when I vote against it, is everybody going to be shocked that I approved it in the budget and did not approve it when they came to us to expend it?
And then again, we don't have all the information. We just got a briefing here. I can't remember. We've had that discussion before, but without them going through the request for action format, Darren coming in here ahead of us saying, "This is our request, these are our quotes," and then we either approve it or don't.
Okay. All right.
So that having been said, we're going to leave it alone?
I'm okay with leaving it alone. The caveat's been thrown out there, and I've done this for five years in a row.
But, Mr. Chair, can I?
We've had that discussion five years in a row.
Well, four, I'm sorry.
All right. Roger?
Phil, one of the questions I have, when you read that, and you said something about the parking lot, and I, didn't they just resurface that whole parking lot for the, out there?
Not the employees.
No.
Employees parking.
Just, just around the, right there. Just, just around the, right there were about four parking stalls, so it was the only thing that got repaid.
Oh, okay, all right.
Mr., are you taking that one item first?
I, I took that item, and I'm out of that item.
Okay.
I mean, because there's been three of them that said they don't, you know, we're going to leave it alone, and that's.
Okay, I'm good. I wanted to ask a question on Commissioner Shadwick's remarks. Can we, can we identify and not fund? Because I, I tend to agree with his thoughts on some of the items at the Senior Center. I, I think, I want to challenge Rosie to continue the great job she's done in, in getting grants, applying for grants and, and donations to help support that, because when we took it on, this wasn't supposed to be this gigantic drain. It was just a matter of us managing it more efficiently. So, I, I'm all for what she wants to do. I identify the need, but I, I would, I would tend to take those out of a budgeted item.
We hadn't got, got there yet, but now we're there. So, the only one that I'm really concerned about is $120, $120,000 for Circle Drive, Number One. I'd like to see that totally eliminated. Number One is too high, and Number Two, that is something that she can go get donated money for, I think, that specifically is, is outlined for Meals on Wheels, because that's what it would be used for.
Well, let's just start with that one. I'm, I'm okay with that.
With doing what I just suggested?
Yeah, let's just start with that one. I'm still.
That's where I'm at.
I'm still in agreement on the other ones, but let's just find consensus.
I am, too. I want to eliminate that $120,000 there, and previously you had, that was on another area. So, okay, now we can go into water damage at Senior Center.
Do you want to get a consensus on that?
It's just you and I that have said that, the 120, so go ahead.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said a second ago. Okay.
My, my thought, you were taking it clear out.
All right.
I wanted to identify it.
I'm taking it clear out. There's two that want to take it out of there. So, three want to leave it in there.
I'm getting a little confused here.
Why?
What you're saying, a budget means you've, you've.
I say that we have a need for this.
I, I agree.
It needs to happen.
I agree. But then, then it has to come out of there, because otherwise you, it is in the budget.
Right. It can't be an unfunded want or need. Do we have that list, or we're just talking flat budget right now?
So, I, I guess, I, we could leave it in there, but set the dollar amount to zero.
There you go.
There you go.
Leave it in, in the, as an identified item, that we're not funding anything for it.
Right.
Is that satisfying?
I concur with that, yes.
I concur.
Okay.
And the water damage at the Senior Center for $50,000, we've pretty much got to pay for that, it seems to me like.
I think if it's damage, it's just too good of a building to let go deteriorate.
I don't, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. I hope we can get a, a better bid, but damage is different than improvements to me. You got to, you got to take care of the building.
Repave the jail visitor entrance for $30,000. It's pretty rough over there, but that's.
I've gone, actually looked at that. That's probably going to need to be done.
Would that, would that be, would a vote coming up in November change our thoughts there as far as those improvements?
Not to me, because, I mean, it's something that needs to be done. A building that's still going to be, exist, is still going to be used for something, even if it passes. And if it doesn't pass, we've, we fix it anyway. And if it does pass, we're three years from a jail. I mean, if we continue to let it deteriorate, it's going to be a real mess.
Yeah, I understand your point, Commissioner. I, I do. But you're right, that timeframe, the three years is, and, you know, I'm hoping that if it does pass, that there's a good use for that building. I, I don't see it being torn down.
We would, we would have a use for it, for certain. Someone would. So, that's, we, we haven't reached a three.
On which one?
On, on the jail visitor entrance for $30,000. Two of us have said, no.
Leave it in there.
Leave it in, yeah.
Leave, I mean, said yes. Leave it in. That is a consensus to leave it in. Roof drainage at the jail for $25,000, again.
Leave in.
Leave it in there, I think. Storage building at the Senior Center for $18,500.
I'm okay with leaving it in, although I might vote when she, she doesn't, I mean, will she have to come to us and, and say why she needs it? Because I don't, I don't know why they need a storage building, but.
Is this just a repair of the storage building they have?
This is that pump, historic pump house building over there that they use for storage, and I'll see if I can pull up what she sent.
And again, for $18,000, I don't want to slow down the process. I guess that I just, my, my bigger concerns about things being creeping over there concerns me, and I want my fellow commissioners kind of to know my thoughts on that, so.
I, I think we missed the windows at the Senior Center there, too.
Right.
Okay, but let's, let's stay with the one we're talking about.
Yeah.
And we'll go back to it.
Boiler, it just says the, the, this would be replacement of the roof, windows, and floor, replacement or repair of the roof, windows, and floor. The roof is leaking and has damaged some of the flooring and windows.
That's better. Then, then I'm okay with that, because you got to take care of a building, so.
Is that pertaining to the $148,000?
No, that is.
No, that's the $18,005.
That's the $18,500, okay. I'm good with that. Leave it in there.
We haven't gone back up to the windows, so.
We'll go back up to the windows, right now.
So, there are 91 windows that are original to the building, built in 1910. That's how some of the water intrusion has occurred. Because it's historic, they're more expensive than normal windows. They're also looking to add some tenting to some of the areas to prevent sun damage to the building interior.
I'm okay with leaving that in there, because it does need to be fixed, but I would emphasize the fact that to search for some grants for historic buildings, for whatever, whatever can happen there to offset that funding for that senior services.
Ditto.
Same here.
Okay, now, there's one left. Clerk administration remodel for 10 grand.
That's fine.
After the explanation, I'm good with that. I, that doesn't sound like enough money to do what I think you want to do, but.
That's, yeah, that is actually the first year of a two-year.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that, that, and now, I assume that there were no, I'm just going to.
That's it for me.
You know what that assuming does to people. But we're into the fire districts and all that, and I didn't hear anything, any, any resistance there whatsoever to begin with. All right. Now, I'll take public comment. There surely got to be some.
All I want to say is, I'm extremely impressed with how you have looked at this real specific before you make the decisions. It gives me confidence as a taxpayer that, and a citizen, that you're doing the job of really taking a hard look at that. I'm amazed. I never dreamed, I never dreamed we'd be here this long, but.
Nor did I.
Neither do we.
But I'm so glad. The only thing I, I did wonder about, and a whole lot of it is way over my head, but because I have worked in mental health, not, not at our mental health department here, I am most supportive of Commissioner White's thought on okaying that 11,000, as, as I understand is, because I think the mental health issues are going to keep increasing. For one reason, the whole COVID thing is creating a lot of stress. So, I think that's, that's one thing I'm, I regret, that not being okay. And just a couple of other things I wanted to say. Commissioner Vendrickson, your thought of coordinating with the city on the COVID orientation thing, ordinance thing, is right on.
Well, we, we're talking the budget here, Lynne.
Okay, is it, well, all right. Will I have a chance to say anything else?
Yeah, at, at a.
All right.
Future time, or you and I individually, whatever it means. It was, thank you.
Yeah, Norman, Mano Salina. On pages 13 and 14, the Road Department, again, why are taxpayers paying for employees' education? If you're starting, if you're going to start paying for the truck drivers, are we going to start paying for the Health Department nurses? Are we going to start paying for clerk training in the registrar D's office, in the appraiser's office? You're opening up a can of worms. We need, we need trucks, we need drivers, but can't they go get their own funding? I had to get my own funding to get my training.
As, as you've attended many, 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 many meetings, I'm surprised that you're asking the question, because we have went over that in our meetings, and that is part of the reason that we couldn't get, that was an incentive to get truck drivers, because we were not getting them. So, we, that was an incentive that we attached to it, to bring people into our fold to apply for the job, and that's where that came from. And that's been an open meeting more than once.
And I've raised that issue twice, more than once, and it shouldn't be allowed.
And you're, you're entitled to your opinion. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Well, I'm not so sure what is needed, but do we just, do we okay the budget as we've kind of amended, and then we vote on it finally next week? Or can we just do that right now?
Through the chair. Great question, Commissioner Shadwick. So, I, I think probably what would be most productive is for me to bring this back next week. I believe I understand all the comments, but I, bring this back with another column that says, "Commissioner's Proposal," and then show you all the, the things that I understand that your changes are, and then you could vote on it at that time.
It makes sense to me to, just for a week, just to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. But I'm, I'm assuming that the next vote's a little quicker.
Yeah, I would, I would hope so, unless I fundamentally misunderstood something.
No, no, I mean, I'm, I'm, but that also makes our choice be here appropriate for today, and that is that we instruct the county administrator to proceed with the 21, 2021 budget as presented, and he will proceed, and next week he will present, and then we say yea or nay.
I'm okay with that.
Is that?
Especially with the executive session forthcoming and questions, so.
Yes. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move we instruct the county administrator to proceed with the 2021 budget as presented with changes today.
There you go. I like that last very part.
Second motion.
It's been moved, and second, that we instruct the county administrator to proceed with the 2021 budget as presented with the changes that we're also instructed to do today. Further comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Finally, we're there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to informational items. Commissioners' comments. Anyone have anything?
I do. I've received multiple and negative comments about our website being down, and I think the public just kind of wants to know what the next step is and what happened and why something this big, this big of an organization had a failure like that. I'm just passing that information along, not saying that I am disappointed, but I've gotten multiple comments about that this week.
So, I, I will share your, I will share the public's disappointment. Yeah, this was, having the website go down at all was a problem. Having it go down at this particular time was a bigger problem, and having it be down for this long is a third level of issue. I will say, the IT staff have worked many long hours trying to fix the problem. They are more hopeful now than they were over the weekend that we will get it back up, but we need to look at a different solution long-term.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I will pass that along. Thank you. My next question is, do, people have asked, "Do we have enough manpower to process the advanced ballot applications?" Ballots are going to be mailed out July 15. Do we have enough help? And if we needed extra help, I would imagine that could come under the coronavirus funding because of the 11 million. I mean, if, if Jamie feels like that she's overwhelmed, because I, I got to think that it's huge compared to past elections, but.
Well, we have the. Right. Deputy clerk and also the HR director here, but I'll just say, I know the clerk's office was feeling overwhelmed, and that we have successfully gotten a couple of extra help folks on board.
We added five to help with the process.
Temporarily.
Temporary.
Yes, temporary work.
Temporary.
And so, I think that is better. It certainly would qualify for the, the CRF funding, but also the clerk's office got specific election funding from the Secretary of State through the CARES Act as well, so.
Okay. That gives me enough information to follow up, so I appreciate that. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, item number two would be announcements from Commissioner or anyone from that matter. Anything?
Nope.
We'll move to our study session portion of it. Item number one, Community Corrections, Advisory Board Expression of Interest Forms Discussion. And this doesn't have anyone attached to it, Phil, is, do we need, are you familiar with it, or where, where are we?
I'm just pulling up. We, I believe attached to the packet, there was.
I have a packet.
I don't have a packet. I don't, I don't, do you have one? I don't either.
Well, I have a packet. I just don't have that in our packet.
I don't have any expression of interest forms in here.
Okay, well, what, what Linda sent out on Thursday appeared to contain a number of expression of interest forms, but we could.
Let's table that for next week.
Yeah.
I'm there, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we'll have one of you come back next week, or, you know, unless it, is there some action needed today?
No, I understand that you have the study session.
Could you be on the mic, please?
Sorry. I understand you do the study session one week, and then we submit an RFA the next. I do have, Linda had collected the expression of interest forms. I don't know if there's a way we could copy, I don't know if you have time to look over them at this point, but I do have that with me.
Well, I would suggest that we deviate from our normal procedure in this regard and roll both of them into one for next week. You know, they, talk about them and, and select them all in one, one, one stroke next week. Is that okay with Commissioners?
It's okay by me.
Okay with the Community Corrections?
As long as that's clean, we can do it that way, discuss and move, have an action.
Sure. I mean, there's nothing magical about having this discussion beforehand. As a point of clarification, do you know when the current terms?
You got your microphone off, Phil?
Sorry. Do you know when the current terms expire?
At the end of this month.
Okay, so we have a couple more meetings, so we could just, we could just table this for next week, and then we would, that would be the 14th, and then we would have the 21st to come back for action if we need to do it that way.
There's nothing today, so.
Yeah.
Quick question, though. Sheri and I just wanted to ask, you know, with this here, do you have a recommendation of who you would, how many are you going to add?
We, we do. There are several, you have forms from three that are already on our board, Claudette Humphrey, Kevin Ellis, and Millie Moy, and we're asking that they be reappointed. And then, we have two positions that will be open, and we're asking for Susan Montague and Rex Searly. I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong, but.
Well, we don't need to, if we're going to do it next week, why are we discussing it now? it now? I mean, unless you want to vote on it now, and I don't have any paperwork, so.
No, I've just, and my question was to Sheri was, is that if they have a recommendation, could that come next week to us, to say, instead of us going through this, that she would already have a recommendation for us to approve?
I would assume that is, been our normal procedure with appointments.
I do have it.
Well, I can't find it in mine, so.
Unless I just printed it off wrong, but I didn't see it. But either, either way, we're not doing anything today, so.
That's correct.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, brother. Yeah, yeah. You've waited a long time for, okay, we're going to go to executive session.
How long for the attorney-client privileges?
I'm hearing fifteen minutes. Commissioner, is a request from Councilor.
All right, Mr.
How much, fifteen?
We'll take a ten-minute break. Well, we will, as soon as I make this motion. Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into exec, executive session under the attorney-client privilege exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Acts for twenty minutes, and reconvene in this room at eleven forty-nine.
Second motion.
It's been moved, and second, that we move into executive session for twenty minutes, with the exception of the attorney-client privilege, for the exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, for twenty minutes, and reconvene in here at, what'd you say, money?
Eleven forty-nine, unless.
Eleven forty-nine, and I'll remind everyone, as they take their break, at the same time, we will be in executive session, so nothing discussed.
That's why I added five minutes.
Yes, I understand that.
Thank you.
There was no action to be taken at this time. We will further move to item number two under executive session for non-elected personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 11:59.
Second motion.
Then moved to second that we move into executive session for the purpose of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes. We're in executive session. First of all, all of those in favor say aye. Aye. Those same sign, we're in executive session. Those same sign, we're in executive session. Okay, we're back into regular session. Again, there is no action to be taken. I don't think feel the need for anything at that point. We'll move to item number three under executive session. Employer-employee negotiations, two last four.
I got it. Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Acts for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 12:10.
Second motion.
It's been moved the second that we move into executive session for employer-employee negotiations for 10 minutes. All those in favor please say aye. Aye. Those same sign, we're in executive session.